Maybe.
Welcome to the September 23rd, 2019 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Well, Joseph, would you like to step up here and lead us in the pledge allegiance? Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Yes, and other Boy Scouts, too, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we're just changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Court, please call a roll.
Hanky, Pagano, Parson, Sam, Harris, Jones, Egan, Caputa, Shuldorff.
Approval of minutes, next item on the agenda, are there any corrections and additions to the meetings minutes of the executive meeting and regular meeting on August 26th? Seeing none, Councilman Shuldorff moves to approve the minutes, second by myself, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Aye, all oppose, ayes have it. Minutes approved. Next, I have a special presentation. Brock Atkins, Hazelwood Northwest Middle School.
Good evening.
Let's make sure it's on. Chris, can you?
Maybe from the bottom.
My name is Brock Atkins, and this evening I come before you to propose that the Florissant City Council establish local funding for any school in Florissant to create their own gardens. There are multiple reasons why I think you should do this, but I won't be listening to you because my limited time. To begin with, U.S. household food consumption in the United States creates around 8.1 metric tons of CO2 each year, 83 percent of the emission of the production of that food. The remaining 11.3 percent is the transportation. If schools were to grow some of their own vegetables, they could reduce the amount of CO2 created when they get their food brought in by food vendors. Furthermore, if one person were to eat one vegetarian and locally grown meal of meat, they could save people going about 1,160 miles. Imagine if our entire school did this just once a week, eating their food they grew at the school. Before I end, I want to quickly talk about the cost of funding in private. Something you will need to grow a garden are hand rates, hand shovels, seed pockets, and soil. These are relatively cheap items that can be purchased at a Home Depot, except the soil that can be a little expensive. I believe that this project can and will have an impact on our city and the participating schools. I know one school, Northwest Middle, that has taken interest in doing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brock, we have a couple of questions. Mr. Harris.
Hey, Brock, I just want to thank you for being here tonight and sharing your passion and your ideas, and I know it isn't your first effort in improving the environment or beautifying the city or having projects like this. Seen that for many months, you've displayed and cared for one of our anti-litter sign, campaign signs in your yard. Many months you've done that, and also you've talked to your neighbors and friends about a lot of ideas. I'm excited to see you developing and using your leadership skills, both at school, Northwest Middle, and in the community, and I also see your family is here tonight and your principal, Dr. LeBlanc, so they're supporting you in big ways. I would like to see more of your ideas move forward, and I'm glad that Northwest Middle, it's a school that's in my ward, and I want to make a donation to the PTA there and see that it is marked for service projects and/or a project like this for your school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, and somebody's probably already said something to you, we do have a community garden here that we are very active with, and we had a public works director, his name was Lou Gerald, he's now gone and retired now, but we looked at some of the green space that we have here, which is our common grounds, and we talked about some of the residents being able to use that common ground for gardening. Some people have picked up on it, but there's a lot of green space here for residents to do gardening. I just think somebody needs to teach them or push them, and you might be the guy, but I thought I would share that information with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Egan.
Good evening, Brock. Thanks for coming to our council meeting tonight. I would like to tell you that over in Ward Three at Blackfoot Park, we have a community garden started by a couple of our younger residents, and they are actually engaging some students with Mr. Harris's school, from McNair School, to help them actually plant and harvest. I don't know if they did harvest, I know they did planting and discussing of the gardens. That's one of the things, we do have that going over in Ward Three. I wish you good luck, and I encourage you, if you're not already on our youth advisory commission, to let Mr. Harris or one of us know, and we'd love to nominate you to be on that commission. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky.
Yes, good evening. Just a quick note on this, this is the Flowering Valley, and I will say that we have some of the finest soil to be found anywhere, and you've got a good leg up already starting here, just pick a good site location, you're already going to have good soil. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanky. Mr. Parson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Atkins, thank you so much for your speech, it was very excellent. Just have one question for you, if your schools are going to endeavor on doing some of these community gardens, what types of things do you think you guys would be growing? You don't know? Okay. Carrots, onions, broccoli?
Flowers.
Flowers, I don't know.
That can be grown in the garden. So we have carrots, potatoes, Brussels sprouts, and a lot of others.
All right, Brussels sprouts, my favorite. Not really, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Brock, what Mr. Egan was saying about the Blackfoot Park, actually Brock lives in Ward Four, and the only park that we have, we have one park in the ward, and that's the one on the corner of Malamphie and Patterson. I don't know if possibly we can start a community garden in that park, we will have to see and check that out, but this is an excellent idea, and it shows the leadership and responsibility for this young man of what he's stepping up to do, and I think it's great. Congratulations on your idea. Good job. Next item on the agenda is a certificate of recognition. Jamena Dukes.
Can you read it while you're walking up there? On Thursday, August 21st, 2019, in the early morning hours, Jamena Dukes was walking to school from her home when she observed a person lying on the front porch at 9:00 Mercury moaning for help. Jamena rushed up to the front porch and observed the elderly female. Jamena said she would get help, she ran to the corner of the street and was able to flag down a Florissant police officer. Jamena explained what happened, and the police officer rushed to the scene. An ambulance was dispatched and was able to transport the elderly female to the hospital for treatment. It was later learned that the elderly lady was 98 years old, and 11:00 PM the previous night, she had suffered a heart attack and was trying to get outside to get help before falling. She laid there until morning until Jamena had found her. I have had the privilege in honor of awarding the certificate of recognition to Jamena Dukes for her quick thinking in emergency situation that saved the life of Norma Dury.
You got a short break, but one of my residents, and that's right, and I was around here, one of my usual people that I check in on, that's through Mercury, called me in a hurry and said, "To me, you need to come down here to speak to me, you may have to find this little girl." So I went over to see Mr. Dury, and when she got back from the hospital, and these guys set me up, "You gotta find her." It was kind of hard to do, I didn't have no name, and they have nothing to go on. I ran to McCurry Elementary School, they said they were looking into it, but I decided before I was with the crosswalk guys, and I knew I wouldn't go out and buy them guys' coffee and stuff, and build a good relation, and they said, "To me, that kid knows everything." And I grabbed it, hit it with a skateboard, and said, "How can I find this little lady?" And he goes, "You're talking about Jamena," and I said, "Okay, did you take it, Jordan?" And that's how I ended up right there, and then went over to her parents' house, her great parents' house, and explained to them what she did, and I just thought this is a great thing, I am going to go over to McCurry Elementary tomorrow, and hopefully get them to make the announcement of the things that she did. So hopefully she'll carry this for the rest of her life, knowing that you do good things for people, people will do good things for you.
I just wanted to say, maybe just said, what a wonderful thing that Jamena did, saved her life, I mean, she's here tonight because of this young lady, and maybe already seeing two of her important kids in our city are doing a wonderful thing to ours, and so thank you so much, and we really appreciate you being there, helping me as a citizen, and she's here tonight with you, thank you.
Yes, that's like the mayor said, the quality of children that we have, the kids that we have in this city, and with especially the school district teachers that manage the school, how it feels possible not turning a blind eye on things, and we have proof that it works, and we have a lady, the proof is still sitting there. Thank you.
The next certificate of recognition we have is for Eagle Scout Joseph Ryan Nugent. Joseph Nugent earned the rank of Eagle Stout on September 7th, 2019, for the completion of his special project where he built birdhouses for the Rankin-Jordan Pediatric Bridge Hospital, for a not-for-profit specialty pediatric rehabilitation hospital. In addition to the birdhouses, he received toy donations totaling over $2,500 to surprise the patients at the hospital. His Eagle Court of Honor ceremony will be held on October 6th, 2019. On behalf of the City of Florissant, I hereby wish to extend my sincere congratulations to the newest Eagle Scout of Boy Scout Troop 713, Joseph Nugent. Your selfless acts have not gone unnoticed, and I am very proud of what you have accomplished so far in your life.
I just want to say congratulations, first team Eagle Scout, that was a unbelievable accomplishment, and obviously you've done a lot of American service, you've done a lot of work, and I know this is not an easy accomplishment, but this is something that you carry on the rest of your life. As the president, I know it's certainly a great accomplishment, congratulations.
This is great, Eagle Scout top of the line. Leadership skills, like the mayor said, seeing all your bands, and that, congratulating you, you should be proud of this all day, or your scoutmaster, your parents should be very proud of it. Thank you.
This is a time to speak to the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda, for your three minutes. This is not a question-and-answer period, if you would like to speak to one of the council member or the mayor's, get with them after the meetings, we'll be happy to speak with you. If you're here to speak on any of the public hearings, make sure, please wait when the public hearing is up, when you have the chance to hear him from the citizens on the public hearing. John Englemeier.
Chris, I don't think that's on. Hang on, John. John, try pushing the button on the bottom.
That one's on, that one's live.
The wired one's on. Just use that one.
There you go.
All right, we'll just use the wired one, Chris.
John Englemeier, 1281 Graham Road. I'm here to speak tonight on what happened to me yesterday. I called several representatives of the city because of an incident that had occurred in front of my home last night. After talking to several individuals, including my personal attorney, tonight the three-minute rule should stand, but I'm going to ask for it to be suspended if I go over the three minutes. But I had a problem with the trash. At 12:00, at 7:40, St. Judith's is my residence, it's not a dumping ground, my street is called St. Judith's Lane, not Alleyway, and it's turning into more of an alley, and disrespectful to the city in terms of its environment and its housing. I get called about a broken window pane, and I called yesterday about Brock boxes, debris, and the caretaking of the Family Dollar, Dollar General, whatever the damn store's name is, how disrespectful they are towards our street, St. Judith's Lane. If anyone wants to dump free, please do so. If anybody's looking for a couch, or ottoman, or a TV set, or set of chairs, please drive by at about 12:20 in the evening, because that's when the sofa and the ottoman was dropped off. Could not get the license plates because of the nighttime camera, did not pick it up. But I did call several individuals, elected officials, and I'm even going further to my own personal attorney to seek retribution for what happened yesterday. There was no reason for my house to face a dump in this city, and they talk about reassessment. My home is only, if I had to sell it yesterday, it would not have been sold at a very good price because of all the debris and the lack of courtesy extended to me as a neighbor. I don't want to diminish the agenda tonight, seems like it was a very good presentation by Brock, and by the way, certificates of recognition to both individuals, but for myself, I'd like to have a recognition to say, "Don't trouble trouble, till trouble troubles you." Oh, I've got trouble, and it's right here in Florissant, and it's on my street, I expect it to be taken care of, so I don't have to pursue this any further into legal matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englemeier.
It is going to be kind of hard to follow those kids. It's amazing, they do amazing things so early in life. But anyway, I have a poorly guarded secret, I just wanted to make it official here in front of the city council, that the Florissant Italian Festival is on for next July, July 18th. We have a few of my fellow Italians, we're starting the planning process, Jackie, you can tell Joe, we'd really like to have some help, but it is on for next July. Figure an area founded by the French should have an Italian festival, just a few opinions. But anyway...
What's the date?
July 18th is the date. So there'll be plenty of planning, looking for some musical acts, and there'll be a way also to include the area restaurants in this as well, so that they can, you know, get some exposure to anybody else that comes from outside the area, so it should be, everybody I've talked to has been pretty excited, so I look forward to any help from the city, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Next item is communications.
Letter dated September 11th, 2019, from Tracy Cufod regarding gateway disposal.
Next item is public hearing, public hearing number 1909026.
Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the Florissant City Hall Council Chambers concerning the fiscal year 2020 annual plan for the Florissant Community Development Block Grant Program. Anyone who needs assistance or auxiliary aids for the meeting should contact Carol Amara at 314-839-7680 at least 24 hours before the meeting.
Robert Smith.
Hello, Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive. My name is Robert Smith, I'm with the Citizens Participation Committee, and we met on September 19th, and we were presented... September 19th, and we were presented with the Community Development Block Grant Anticipated Funds Board the year 2020. And the committee voted, and it was unanimous, so as you will see, we are continuing to fund the program that will address the city's priority needs and establish for the next five-year consolidation plan. If you will go to the, I guess, everybody has the proposal, the proposal is, for the year 2020, the entitlement amounts will be $248,515. Of that amount, the way it breaks down will be the housing programs. Home Improvement Program will be $118,812. Home Improvement Program for the mechanical is $60,000. Project Impact will be $10,000. Public Services, which is for mortgages, rental, and utility assistance, will be for $10,000. And the grant administration will be for $49,703, for a total of $248,515. The draft of the annual plan will be available on the city's website, or at the Community Development Office for review, and will be open for a public, for a 30-day public comment period, which will end at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, October 23rd. We would like to encourage people to review the plan and submit any concerns to the Community Development Office. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak or comment on the public hearing? Seeing none, Councilman Hinky moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman Siam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it, public hearing is closed. Thank you, Robert. Next item is old business, bills for a second reading. Substitute Bill Number 9531. Councilman Egan moves to accept Substitute Bill 9531, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Councilman Hinky moves for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance mending, Chapter 520, signs and billboards to allow for digital signs.
Councilman Shuldoff moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance mending, Chapter 520, signs and billboards to allow for digital signs.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Bill Number 9531 passes and becomes Ordinance 8548. Bill Number 9532. I'll move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within various general fund accounts for the Parks Department.
Mr. Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within various general fund accounts for the Parks Department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Bill Number 9533 passes and becomes Ordinance 8550. Next item is new business, board appointments. Mayor appointments? Councilman Siam moves to approve the request for a beer and wine liquor license for ATN Nails and Spa located at 2536 North Highway 67. Seconded by myself, roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Request is approved. Councilman Hinky moves to approve the requests, approve the request for beer, wine, liquor license for Old Town Restaurant Company, LLC, doing business as Old Valley Wood Fried Pizza Company located at 315 Rule St. Francis, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Roll call, please.
Hinky?
What? Okay, discussion. Mr. Egan.
I'd like to suspend the rules and ask the petitioner to come forward, and we can maybe ask the petitioner a couple of questions, I know I have.
Mr. Egan makes a motion, we suspend the rule, seconded by Mr. Shuldoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Pergon, I hope I'm saying your name correctly, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good. I know myself and several of the council people have a couple of questions about what you're proposing to do down there.
Sure.
What hours are you proposing to be open down there, and what days of the week?
Our schedule will be Thursday, Fridays, and Saturdays from 11 till 9.
And will you be open any other days of the week?
Our plan at this time is not.
Okay, so just Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Correct.
Is that going to be a sit-down restaurant and carry out?
Just, it will be sit-down with carry-out as well, yes.
Okay, sit-down and carry-out. And do you, do you have any, any ideas of running a bar out of that, or just drinks for people who are sitting there eating their dinner?
We do not have a bar, we're just planning on beer and wine only.
Beer and wine only, and that would just be solely for the people who are eating there?
Correct.
Now, to be over what you said, at 11 or 9 PM?
9 PM.
9 PM? Okay, that's all I have, thank you very much, and good luck from my standpoint.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Do I, do I ask about the parking?
Okay.
Where are we going to be using the parking at?
So, we have the 18 spots on our lot, we have a parking easement to the lot on 325 that allows us full access to that lot. We also have a parking agreement with KB Electric to use theirs as overflow.
Okay, great. And like I always hit every business with that comes to our city, trash.
We currently have a two-yard dumpster, I believe, on the site, which is at the very back of the property.
Okay.
That is shared with the apartment building, but at this time, there's never been any issues.
At our entrance and exits, can we put some cans there to make sure anybody coming in or leaving is putting them in the right place? We don't want them parking lots getting trashed up.
I mean, I guess we could, I'm not exactly sure how appearance-wise that would look, since it's right on the street.
Okay, I don't mind so much that, but I mean, when they leave in the inside?
Oh, inside the building?
Yeah, if we could have a trash can there, so when everybody's leaving, they got cups, paper plates, anything.
Ours will be, I mean, the only cups that would be to go is possibly cups if they're getting to go sodas.
Sure. But I mean, any trash that they have, I mean, we want to make sure that they do have a place, it's an option for them to put it there instead of put it into parking lots. You'll soon see that, once you're up and running, that everybody's not so kind of courtesy about that, but we need to really start getting more stringent on that stuff, so I'm not just hitting you, I'm hitting everybody that comes along, that we need to start.
Yeah, it's not a problem to have a trash receptacle right by the front door.
Great, I sure appreciate that.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Shuldoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pergon, what kind of timeframe are you on for completion of this building?
Currently, we are working with the final phase with the architect to build a 10-by-20 room off the back, which will actually house the oven. Our original plan was to have the oven attached to the building, we were in negotiations with another company to actually buy their restaurant, they decided to stay open, they were down south. When looking at their oven, it gave us a few different ideas on how we wanted our oven to sit inside the building, because originally, we were just going to attach it to the back and build it into the brick. After looking at a few more, decided that probably wasn't the wisest decision, because if you had to do some repairs, you'd have to dismantle it. So once that oven's built, the architectural plan should be finished this week and submitted to planning, or to the building commissioner, either later this week or next week, figuring three to four weeks to get that built, maybe a month. So, we're hoping sometime in October, we're probably looking more November, mid-November.
Okay, have you been in, started the initial dialogue with St. Louis County about inspection?
So, I met with the St. Louis County representative two weeks ago to go through the building for the first time, we have about a checklist of five things to do, very minor, things of cove base, we got to cover the ceiling above the kitchen, and the rest are just things we already knew, which were like panic bars and things like that.
Are you going to have a band or live music at all?
If we, we're planning music, it'll all be inside and acoustic. Because it's a brick building, and we have a lot of exposed brick on the inside, having something better, bigger and better than that, which I'm not in favor of anyway, would just bounce off there and just be loud and unrecognizable, to be honest with you.
Okay, how about, once you get open and you're successful, are you, have any plans or any kind of patio or seating or anything?
It is a thought process, at this time, we want to get past the first stage, which is, see if it's going to be successful. So, there is room out back without having to take some of the parking, actually, we can do it without taking any of the parking. One of the challenges we would face would be egress for the apartment building. Currently, there's a sidewalk that comes off the back of their building into our parking lot, whether or not that we would have to maintain that, I don't know legally whether we would, but there'd be certainly something we'd have discussions with the apartment owner at this point as to whether they would want to modify that, or if there's any way we could get them to agree maybe to pave part of their parking lot and back to put some parking in behind there. Currently, about half of the residents of the apartment building have vehicles to drive, and probably four of those have sat on my parking lot for about four months and haven't moved. So, there's going to be some discussion with that, with them, about maybe doing some assigned parking so that they can share with the building at 325, so.
Okay, I wish you all luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shuldoff. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pergon, I just wanted to ask, do you plan on having any discounts for our senior citizens and our veterans at your establishment?
More likely just for veterans and police officers and firefighters, I haven't thought about senior citizens, I'm not that far away, believe it or not, so.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I would, I would, you know, ask that you consider that, of course, a lot of our seniors on fixed incomes, and of course, they love pizza too.
Yeah.
So, I think that would be something that's great, we have a great senior community here in the City of Florissant, so that may be something that you really need to consider.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, hi, Steve. I spoke with Steve, Mr. Pergon, on this, and went over the questions that you guys have all asked, and I just want to reiterate on the patio. It's not on the burners now, if you would possibly have a patio, but we are under the understanding you'd come back before us, before a patio would be presented.
If we decided on a patio, we'd have to actually build that anyway, so we'd have to go before building commissioner and come before here to get that approved.
Right, right. Just because, Mr. Pergon is aware of some of the other issues on St. Francis, and we know what we're doing here, and I told him tonight that we would cross our Ts and dot our Is on this far, we don't want to walk into a problem, and I don't foresee any kind of problem.
I'm part of the conglomerate that has issues with the smoke and sift to some degree, not necessarily with the business itself, but just with the noise. I actually did approach my neighbors behind me, even though they know me well, when I went through and had the disposition signed, I actually asked them to sign it as well to make sure they're fully aware of that, hey, this is going to be alcohol served here, and had 100% participation from all of them, so.
Well, Steve, I wish you the best of luck, because I'll tell you right now, I hope you're very successful, because I'll take a thriving business over a vacant building every day.
It's been vacant since 1990.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Mayor?
Steve, I don't have any questions, I just want to say I'm excited about the opening. I know you've been working on this a long time.
Six years.
Six years, I know it's been a long time, and I appreciate your commitment to St. Francis Street.
I have to say thank you to the city for being patient, I mean, I know it's, I mean, I didn't find it was vacant until we started hooking up gas, and they said, hey, we haven't had gas service here since 1990. So, it's been a long time coming, and as patient as the city's been, as patient as I've had to be with labor and other avenues of this financing and so forth.
Well, good luck, and I'm sure you'll be successful.
Thank you. I hope so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Steve, is the inside all finished?
So, the only things left on the inside is, we are having our tables made by a, his name's Matt Rupp, whose father is Steve Rupp, local person, so he's manufacturing those. He's also going to be making a, I'm going to call it a bar, but it's not a bar. We have a 52-inch-high wall where you can see into the kitchen, he's actually going to be making a top for that out of steel that matches a big steel beam that's in there and some other steel structures that are kind of accent points of the restaurant. Beyond that, the rest of it is all built out, a couple of minor things like putting in panic bars and things like that.
Would you keep it kind of the old style inside?
I mean, to the extent we can, I mean, there was only, when we were able to tear it down back to, we had basically two walls standing, one in the apartment and one in the lower level, we were able to see where the original walls were, there was only one perpendicular wall in that building, in the lower level, so everything else, the backside was built in the 1950s when Hutchins was there, and the rest of it wasn't really anything there originally. So, we took it back to the best we could, had to replace all the flooring and so forth, but we actually utilized the apartment floor, the actual wood of that floor as pieces within the wall, so we've covered part of the wall with those pieces along the bar walls covered at, so. We were hoping to be ready, at least be able to have it open, people can walk through it by Oktoberfest, but that's a pretty big, we might be able to, so. We did add, one of the things that we did add is kind of a cool feature, and I know there's a couple of people from the city who walked through from the building commissioner one day, and they're like, hey, you want to come walk through it? We put a dumb waiter in, it's a manual dumb waiter, so it's actually, you can see the workings of it, so we're hoping that that is kind of a cool accent piece.
We're good, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Councilman Hinky moves to approve the request, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Bills for a first reading, Bill Number 9534.
Ordinance authorizing transfer $3,000 from account number 50929472, park pavement repairs to account number 50933442, materials and supplies for JJE Pool.
Mr. Shuldoff moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing transfer $3,000 from account number 50929472, park pavement repairs to account number 50933442, materials and supplies, JJE Pool.
Mr. Hinky moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfer $3,000 from account number 509-29472, park pavement repairs to account number 509-33442, materials and supplies, JJE Pool.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Bill number 9534 passes and becomes ordinance 8551. Bill number 9535.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $12,000 from a serilateral account number 0458050060, professional services serilateral video, to account number 04580030000, equipment repairs for additional repairs for equipment.
Now, we're on the right page. Bill number 9536.
Ordinance authorizing various transfers within general fund accounts to better classify expenses between account categories.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, eyes have it.
Ordinance authorize, where am I? Ordinance authorizing the, various transfers within general fund accounts to better classify expenses between account categories. Get me on my step over here.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing various transfers within general fund accounts to better classify expenses between account categories.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Bill number 9536 passes and becomes ordinance 8552. Bill number 9537.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a second reading, second by myself, roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Bill number 9536 passes and becomes ordinance 8553. Bill number 9537.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Jones, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to rescind ordinance number 8529 that authorized a transfer of $15,000 from account number 0153610000, salaries and benefits IT to account number 0157010000, salaries and benefits media to cover the additional salary expenses for IT media director.
I'll move for a third reading, second by Mr. Sholdoff, roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance to rescind ordinance number 8529 that authorized a transfer of $15,000 from account number 0153610000, salaries and benefits IT to account number 0157010000, salaries and benefits media to cover the additional salary expenses for the IT media director.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Bill number 9536 passes and becomes ordinance 8553. Bill number 9537.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Jones, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
Mr. Sholdoff moves for a third reading, second by myself, roll call, please.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing various transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sholdoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing transfers within the court department to account for provisional judge services.
For the final vote is taken, is anyone in the audience like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Starting early, isn't it?
Yeah. So, please, please.
October 13.
Oh, you know what? I read the time. 11 to 5 on the 13th. I stand corrected.
Just making sure.
No, don't worry. I won't. Please take part in the Fall Festival. It's a great event. It's one of the best events in North County. Over the next two weeks to the next month and a half or so, EFK Mowen Survey Company will be along the Coldwater Creek Concrete Culvert in Ward Five, working on surveying work for the St. Jox Sanitary Relief Project. They will be on St. Jox and Lafayette on that side of the street. And most of their work is going to be done on the creek bed, but some, they'll be in some backyards. So, please don't be alarmed that survey crew is in your area doing some work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sholdroff. Ms. Pagano.
Well, I would like to congratulate our city attorney, Mr. Hassle. He has been, once again, named Lawyer of the Year. So, we are very lucky to have you.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
I think you should enter a chili cook-off.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Firearms. Like I say every, every council meeting, make sure you secure your firearms. Don't leave them in unlocked vehicles. Be a responsible firearm owner. If you're not responsible, you shouldn't be one. Last Wednesday, September 18th, was United States Air Force birthday, so all you Air Force veterans, give you a shot on. Happy birthday. Been 72 years since the Air Force has been established. The Glow Run for Suicide Prevention, like Mr. Jones said about this weekend, Saturday, very great event. I think every year, it gets bigger and bigger and I think it's going to continue on in the future. And every event, it'd be bigger and bigger. We had, this year, we had 380 runners and walkers, which is up from last year. Had over 200 spectators, people just sitting around, you know, playing baseball, softball and the thing and just having a good old time. And the staff, couldn't ask for a better staff. We have over 30 of the staff members. Cheryl's staff did a hell of a job out there. Good job, Cheryl. Congratulations to that and I'm sure we did very well this year on that. So, I'm looking forward to next year. This is a great event and hopefully we can get some more people involved with the suicide prevention. Thank you. Mayor?
Just to talk about the officer real quick, I was called by Chief Fagan just prior to the meeting and he has been released from the hospital. So, that's good news. And he's recovering at home. Congratulations again, John. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Great honor. Great to have you as our city attorney. Those that were able to attend the 9/11 ceremony, I want to thank the VFW Post for holding that. It was very well attended. I thought it was a great program and I just want to say that those that attended, I know you guys had a great time. It's a great event. And if you're not able to attend, weren't able to attend this year, please come next year. As was mentioned, that on Wednesday night is our last Wednesday night out. And at 5:45, we have a plaque dedication for the late Gray Zeichen. It's set to be in front of 5:25 Rue St. Francis and that'll be right before the Wednesday night out. We also lost another great businessman on St. Francis Street, John Wurtwig. We're going to dedicate a plaque for John in front of his business, Florissant Glass. That's going to be on Friday, October 11th, in front of 6:18 Rue St. Francis. That'll be at 5:30. And we have our last food truck night, which is going to be on October 11th at the Knights of Columbus Grounds. Starts at 5:00, is over at 9:00. Encourage everybody to attend. Those are great events. And we also have the sixth annual in power North County Race to the Shrine. It's a 5K run and walk, which will be held on Saturday, October 19th, starting at the old St. Ferdinand Shrine. And as, and just to talk about the Fall Festival real quick, as Councilman Sholdroff spoke of, that's Sunday, October 13th from 11 to 5. It's on St. Francis Street. There's music and entertainment on every block. Of course, the chili cook-off, pony rides, craft and arts fair, the flea market, and of course, the police department will be hosting the car show at the Knights of Columbus Grounds. Guys, it's the largest street party in the, I think, the state of Missouri. It's lines thousands of people up and down St. Francis Street. Please come out. We've been blessed with great weather and it's a wonderful event, so please come and see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next regular meeting of the Florissant City Council will be Monday, October 14, 2019. Ms. Pagano moves to adjourn the regular, regular meeting. Second by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned.